February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, special meeting of Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, member at large and chairman of the board. At this time, I would like to ask other members of the board to introduce theirself. Mr. Dedman?
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Steve Hall, Dallas Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Doc Cherry, at large member.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Brent Moore, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Doc, can you turn your, uh, there you go.
And Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon. Our first order of business is adopted agenda. You have that proposed agenda before you. Mr. Moore?
Motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Second, Mr. Davis? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. The agenda is adopted. This is not a regular February meeting. That meeting will take place next Monday, February fifteenth. The purpose of this special meeting is to allow our board to discuss the latest guidance surrounding the school operation during the pandemic. Gaston County Schools has had in-person learning since August seventeenth, when the governor executive ordered permitted students to return to school. Since that time, we have been in Plan B, which is a combination of in-person and virtual learning. We have also expanded our fully virtual option for those who chose not to come in person. Today, we want to examine how we might be able to safely expand our in-person learning for our K through fifth grade students and when to begin that expansion. Before we hear from our staff, I wanted to acknowledge that this board has heard from the parents, teachers, and others who feel very strongly about this. Some of you have expressed concerns over returning more fully due to the class size. Some have expressed concern over returning until there is a vaccine. Some think we should return immediately in-person instruction, K through twelve. Some of you think we need to keep things just like we are now in Plan B. Some think we should return gradually with the younger grades returning first. We do hear you and the board appreciate all your comments. I would like to thank everyone who took the time to express your opinions and concern to this board and assure you that we have heard you. Obviously, we will not be able to reconcile all those concerns, no matter what we decide, but we do hear you. Before the board discusses all this, let's take a moment to hear from our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity to share with you some of the data that we have collected since last Tuesday. And as we have done in our other COVID discussions, we've invited Steve Eaton, who, as you all know, is our public health director. And he has dedicated his time, as well as his staff's time, to provide specific guidance to us since the beginning of the pandemic and particularly since we began school operations in the fall of two thousand and twenty. And so I just appreciate what he has done in ongoing partnership. We had our weekly meeting today and had a spirited discussion about some of the other changes that have gone on. For example, the community knows that last week, we were able to allow our course and band to come back inside for their classwork, which is an example of the two groups working together. And so, Steve, we just appreciate the ongoing dialogue. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, members of the school board, and Dr. Booker. And thank you again for having me this evening. Again, my name is Steve Eaton, and I'm the Public Health Director for the Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services. So tonight, I'm going to present to you an updated data set since the last time that we met in December. First, I'm going to present to you some countywide data as it relates to the transmission of COVID here in Gaston County and its impact on our local key metrics that we follow that are in line with the state's. I'm going to follow that by then providing you all with data related to Gaston County's school age population, as well as faculty. I do want to preface this by saying that this data that I'll present on school age is for all Gaston County schools, including public, charter, and private schools. And we're going to look at the data from a couple of angles. One, number of cases, total number tested, and percent positive in relation to the total number of tests that are also commonly referred to as the positivity rate. So first, if you'll take a look at this slide. This slide shows rates per capita for Gaston compared to the state and our peer counties. So the blue bars that you see are cases per one thousand, and the green bars are deaths per one thousand. And as you'll see, the case rate and death rate for Gaston County still exceeds the state, as well as some of our peer counties. I am pleased tonight to show you some really positive trends that we're seeing, and we're certainly excited to see those. With regards to the daily number of new cases, you'll see that we're currently coming off the highest surge of new cases since the start of the pandemic. The blue line that jumps up and down is the daily reported cases that we put in every day. And then the thick red line that you see going through is a rolling seven-day average. In August and September of this year, we're averaging around forty to fifty cases per day. And then from about November to early mid-January, we were averaging somewhere around one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred daily new cases, more than three times what we were seeing earlier in the summer. And there's actually a couple of points that you'll see in January where we were exceeding three hundred and fifty cases in a day. I'm sorry, if you'll go back one slide, okay. Since coming out of the Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday surge, which we knew were going to occur based on family gatherings and group gatherings, we're beginning to see that reduction in daily new positives. You'll see that sharp downturn, and that's a positive sign. The one thing that does have me paying close attention, though, is it's still a relatively high number of daily new cases, but trending in the right direction. But what does cause me pause is just if we would then begin to see community-wide transmission of some of the variants that you've heard about. That would more than likely generate an uptick, but where we are now is in a positive direction. When you look at the positivity rate, our current positivity rate is twelve point three percent with a good amount of folks still getting tested. Right around six thousand citizens per week are still getting tested. So a high positivity rate shows a greater penetration of the virus in the community, along with greater community-wide transmission. Again, we're very encouraged by this trend, nearly cutting in half what it was at its highest point, at twenty-three point four three percent at the beginning of January. So that's nearly cut in half. However, I will say it's still high. Last time I pointed out, we really want to see this metric of positivity around five percent or less. And this is why we've got to keep, and I say it all the time, our foot on the gas with regards to the three Ws and keep those prevention measures that we know are working still in our favor. This is another really nice curve here. This is hospitalizations. So with a high number of daily new positives and a high percentage of positives, we're also going to see a high amount of hospitalizations. And we certainly saw that during the surge coming in early January, when it was at its highest point. The curve you see here reflects Gaston County citizens hospitalized. Obviously, the bulk of those are at Caramont, but it does take into account Gaston County citizens who are also hospitalized in neighboring hospitals. You'll see that the end of October, we were averaging around sixty hospitalized. And in early January, we were more than double that at one hundred and twenty. And some days, Caramont had close to one hundred and forty in its COVID census. We're encouraged to see this nice bend in this metric, but again, it's still higher than what we'd like to see. This slide overlays the weekly cases, the weekly hospital census averages, and the weekly COVID deaths. Again, you'll see very high numbers in all three areas, beginning in early December, but trending downward as we come into February. This is, and many of you may be familiar with this. This is the county alert system that was developed by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This is a color-coded system that breaks counties into three impact group areas. And what goes into determining whether a county is orange, yellow, or red are three variables, the first being the percent of COVID cases compared to its total number tested, the case rate per one hundred thousand residents, and the hospital impact from the disease. This system currently has Gaston County, as well as all of our contiguous counties, in the red tier, which therefore identifies our region as seeing significant impacts from COVID transmission. So now we'll take a look at Gaston County's school age data. This slide shows you, per month, the number of students and staff in Gaston County testing positive for COVID. You'll see, again, that big jump in December and January from three hundred and eighty-one in November to eight hundred and twenty-five in December and seven hundred and eighty-one in January. And currently in February, we have seventy-nine positive cases. And I do apologize for the jumbledness, if you will, of these percentages on the slide, but I wanted to just kind of allow you to be able to see kind of where we've been and where we are now. So when looking at this data, the red bar is the total positive and the blue is the total tested. And again, this is reflective of the ages four to eleven. And I wanted to move that number to four because I also wanted to, we've also seen some positives in the pre-K population as well. So I wanted to make sure we captured that, the four-year-olds to eleven. As you can see with the four to eleven, the current positivity rate for this age group is thirteen point three percent, again sharply declining from the twenty-eight point two percent we saw earlier when it was at its highest rate. But again, certainly higher than the five percent where we'd like to see it. Similarly, with the ages twelve to eighteen, we're again seeing a steady decrease in the percent positive of this population. Currently, the positivity rate for this group is thirteen point two eight percent, which again is more than half what it was in January when it was at thirty point two two percent. And then finally, I just wanted to update you on faculty and staff hospitalizations. On this slide, you'll see the number beginning in August with its highest amount in December and then moving to five in January. There's currently two faculty or staff that are currently hospitalized due to COVID-related illness. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
I have several questions that I would like to ask Mr. Eaton, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Eaton, first of all, I was on the website, and I saw that, and I quote, "We are no longer able to accurately report active and recovered cases due to changes in the way we conduct case investigations." The information that you just presented to us, is that the most current information? Or is, I think I saw the date listed below, but I just need to know, is that the most current information that you have for us tonight?
Yes, ma'am. That is, what I presented tonight is the most current information that I had as of four o'clock this afternoon. With that said, that disclaimer that we have on our website, we put that on there six months ago. If you'll remember, back early on in the pandemic...
Updated then.
I'm sorry?
So it needs to be updated because people will refer to that page?
Yeah, we'll take that disclaimer off. That was, those are two metrics that we used to follow when we had such low numbers. But as far as being able to track the number of people who have recovered, based on sheer volume and people not answering their phone, we weren't able to accurately continue to capture that, and that ended about five months ago.
Okay, so then I don't know whether or not it would be worth the time to go to the website then if it isn't true or the most accurate information. But let's move on. I heard you give an overview of COVID here in Gaston County, but I did not hear a breakdown into subgroups.
I can certainly, as far as age, gender, and racial, ethnic disparities?
Yes, yes.
As far as within school age population or countywide?
School age as well as county. I think the overall information would be most helpful right now.
Okay. Well, I can certainly put that together and get that out to you. I can tell from a general sense that right now, in the African-American population, generally for Gaston County, the rate of positivity is right at the amount of, is reflective of the demographic group. So I think it's seventeen percent of Gaston County is African-American, and I believe it's right around sixteen, seventeen percent of those who've become positive from COVID are African-American. Where we are seeing the greatest disparities is in the Hispanic community. It is far more disproportionate in the Hispanic than any other group that we've seen. But over time, because we've had such widespread transmission of the virus in our community, what you begin to see is that the positivity and the numbers of positive become reflective of the community because it's so widespread.
Okay, so as we look at the geographic region of Gaston County, where would you say the most highest percentage is right now?
So right now, the highest rates of transmission you're going to find are, tend to be in your more densely populated communities. So when you look at Gastonia, you'll see the highest numbers of those testing positive.
Well, I'm thinking, and I'm asking the question because I want to, in my mind, see those schools in the area. So that's the reason for the question.
And if you look at the website, you mentioned the website before, it'll give you a breakdown on census track. I'm sorry?
So that's correct, so that's correct, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Anyone else? Mr. Hall?
Are you talking about a down spiral right now with the positive cases? Do you think any of that's got to do, due to everyone being vaccinated? Not everyone, but a lot of people being vaccinated now?
I would say probably the best reflection of the vaccination impact would probably be on some of the hospitalizations. We were seeing in, prior to the vaccine, a large number of folks from the long-term care facilities, prior to vaccination, ending up in the hospital. I think it's too early to say that the vaccine has had an impact on our, on the COVID spread in the community because really so few people have become vaccinated. And I'll just give the example, within the health department, we only get somewhere around six hundred to nine hundred vaccines per week to vaccinate the community with. And in general, only one hundred and twenty thousand vaccines come to the whole state of North Carolina in any given week, which is right around or slightly less than one percent of the population. So until we get more vaccine pumped into our community, we're probably not going to see that, that kind of impact directly associated with positivity rates or daily new cases. But the impact that it's having on long-term care facilities and keeping folks out of the hospital, I think that's where you're going to see in the immediate the greatest return.
May I ask another question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dedman's up, and then I'll go right to you, Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton, first of all, thank you for all you're doing, and we certainly appreciate your time. Has there been any talk, we met with our state legislators about a week and a half ago, and we brought up the possibility of having our teachers vaccinated. Has there been any news from your end about when we could get our teachers vaccinated? Or is there anything that we could do to move that process along?
Yeah. So what you know is what I know right now, which is currently the teachers and school faculty still remain in group three. You know, we moved through the healthcare providers and the first responders, and then are also into the sixty-five and older population. Currently, where teachers and faculty fall are in the frontline essential workers. I know there's lots of advocacy going on from a number of different groups to advocate for moving teachers to like a two point five, somewhere in between, coming out of two, but prior to going into three. But currently, right now, they still remain in group three. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Guthrie?
That was part one of the question that I was going to ask, but the superintendent may need to, or Mr. Joey may need to answer as well. Okay, Mr. Eaton, you said that you get between six hundred to nine hundred vaccines a week, am I right?
Yes, ma'am. So let me clarify that by saying that we just, we just, starting last week, the state started giving us a baseline allocation for all counties in North Carolina. So our base allocation was six hundred. We then received, which means that for three weeks, we'll get no less than six hundred. Last week and this week, we received an additional three hundred for a total of nine hundred. Prior to moving into that baseline allocation, two weeks prior to that, we received zero vaccines. And prior to that, we were receiving about nineteen hundred vaccines. So it has jumped around quite a bit. And then after we have three straight weeks of the six hundred base allocation, they will then reassess based on the availability of vaccine, which means it could go up or it could come down.
Okay, so based on that number, whether it's up or down, and the teachers are in group three, Mr. Clinton or Dr. Booker, how long do you think it would take before our teachers would receive the vaccine?
I think, Ms. Guthrie, that part of what Mr. Eaton has expressed and in some of the calls I have been on, the challenge is like in Gaston County, Mr. Eaton, we have over forty or fifty thousand residents that are in the sixty-five and up category that you're trying to meet now. And that category has to go through the vaccinations before we would get to the teachers based on the regulations as set up now. So it would be hard for any of us to project when we would actually get that teacher in line. And I know that many of you on this board have made action, reached out to legislators. I know there's been phone call exchanges between the chair and Representative Torbett and also Representative Virginia Fox, trying to get any kind of help that they could. I know Mr. Eaton was on a statewide call where he advocated for giving it. I'll just add to that, Ms. Guthrie, today, the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association, which I serve on the executive board, sent a letter to Governor Cooper that starts out with, "The superintendents of North Carolina understand the importance and urgency of providing in-person instruction for our students this year. We support your administrative efforts, but we ask that your administration and the Department of Health and Human Services prioritize teacher and school-based staff in group three." And it goes on to further expand why we think that's important. So there are a number of people advocating for it. And what Mr. Eaton said to us a number of weeks ago, his capacity to put it in people's arms is there. It's having the actual vaccine to do that. And I know he has worked with Caramont and Integra to try and offer that to us.
If I could add something to that as well, part of the other struggle in our world too is that not every county has the size population that we have and/or the numbers of, for example, sixty-five and older that we have. So quite honestly, there's the potential that other counties could get there quicker than we could, which adds further strain in our world to where a neighboring county might have moved through their sixty-five and older population, be ready to move into group three. And as Dr. Booker said, we've got close to forty thousand people that we have to show that we've done our due diligence to make sure that they have the vaccine, had the opportunity for the vaccine because of their vulnerability.
Well, we, it sounds to me like we have a great challenge right now. And we have a problem that we do not have a solution for right now as it relates to our wonderful teachers. Thank you so much, sir, for answering my question.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Eaton, thank you for being here. You are a wealth of knowledge, and we greatly appreciate it. Can you just explain to me what the simple definition of a baseline allocation is, just to kind of put it in perspective for us?
You mean in terms of how they determine it?
Yes.
Yeah, good question. So I'll give you what, the way that I understand it. And so, so you take one hundred and twenty thousand current vaccines coming into North Carolina. The state then takes off the top a certain number of vaccines for what they call large-scale events, like what you saw at Charlotte Motor Speedway. There's been things that have gone on in Winston and, I believe, Wake County, et cetera. So they take a chunk off. So the last time they carved out, I believe it was like thirty-four thousand off the top. They then took the remainder, I think it was like eighty-four thousand after that, to allocate out to one hundred counties. But then keep in mind, within each individual county, there's different providers of the vaccine. So currently, it's in Gaston, it's the Public Health Department, Caramont, and Integra. But then some local pharmacies are coming on board. So then what they then do is they then take that small finite amount, and then they set a base allocation in terms of what comes to the county. And they say, okay, health department, you'll get at least six hundred guaranteed. Caramont, I think, got like nine fifty guaranteed. So you're talking about the seventh largest health department in North Carolina gets a base allocation of six hundred. The one and only hospitals in Gaston County gets like nine fifty for a population of well over two hundred and twenty thousand people. And people want to know, how can we get it to people more quickly? And to Dr. Booker's point, it's not about the capacity of this community to deliver a vaccine. We have amazing partners in this community between the hospitals, the private providers, our federally qualified health center, Integra, the school system. I mean, we can all be locked arm in arms, but if we don't have the vaccine to do it with, that's where we struggle. And we're ready to go here in Gaston County. And again, the state's up against it too because they're only getting the amount of vaccine that gets delivered by the federal government. And we knew from the beginning it was going to come out in a trickle, but we're ready for when that spigot turns on to be able to deliver more here in Gaston.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Mr. Collier?
Ms. Cherry asked my question.
Ms. Cherry asked. Ms. Cherry asked my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lovelace?
Mr. Eaton, when the vaccines are available, what is the plan on when or where the teachers will be given this vaccine? Will it be within their own schools? Have you gone that far as to plan this yet? Have you gone that far as to plan this yet?
We, so that's a great question. We have not got that far, but we've seen what really works well here in the community. Um, a couple models. There's been models that, that the hospital does where you, um, where you walk in and they have a kind of room-by-room scenario. You walk in through registration, you move into vaccination, you go to another room for observation for the 15 or 30-minute period timeframe. Um, so they've got a great system that works there. And then our drive-through, um, farmer's market type event, uh, has also proven very beneficial. So I can assure you, when it comes time to, uh, vaccinate the teachers, whether it's through a drive-through, whether it's through, um, something that Caramont's doing, uh, maybe it's something Integra sets up in partnership with us, or potentially if we can get more, um, uh, uh, private providers with the vaccine, it might be a situation where, um, where staff can, can get the vaccine through their, through their own medical provider, um, or a combination of all three. Um, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Eaton? Okay. Okay. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Eaton, do, um, do you know or can you share what the backlog is today for the second tier group?
As far as how many, so I'd hate to give a specific number, um, but we've only been in group two for like two or three weeks with limited amount of vaccine with a population of 40,000. Um, it's, it's pretty big, I would imagine. Now, that's not to say, kind of like with group one, you know, we moved into group two before we had completely exhausted group one. We just have to be able to assure we've done our due diligence in trying to set a reasonable opportunity for those in group two before we can move to group three. And we'd have to have the concurrence with the state that moving to group three is, is the appropriate time.
And, and part of my question's personal because, uh, I have a mother that's going to be 88 this week and she received her first vaccine last Wednesday. And so she's group one and she got her first vaccine last Wednesday at the health, uh, well, at the farmer's market.
Okay.
And, uh, so if we're that far behind, I mean, I, I'm just going to throw a number out there, I'm going to say, uh, tier two, we're in excess of 30,000 people.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Or higher, and higher, much higher. Okay, that's my number, not yours. I'll clarify that.
Smart man. Mr. Booker?
Steve, thank you again for giving your time and the interaction with the board tonight.
Sure.
You have one? Hey, just.
Steve, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Um, hey, this is Justin Davis. I really appreciate you being with us. Um, looking at your numbers with regard to faculty, staff and students. I'll give you a minute to pull that information before I ask my question. Um, so it looks like obviously in, you know, September, October, November, our numbers were more than half of what they were in December and January, correct?
In, uh, in the October, November timeframe?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's true.
Um, and then it looks like here in February, in the first week of February, we've only seen 79 cases to date, which, I mean, if I look at that, that to me looks like we're getting ready to see a significant drop in monthly cases in February.
So wi- without a crystal ball, but I would say you're, you're, you're seeing that correctly in that, you know, that's also reflective of, of the, of the sheer drop we've seen in the total number of cases, the positivity rate. Um, everything that we're seeing is, is that things are trending in that direction. You're correct.
And then I believe in your next slide, you showed us the percent positive cases, uh, in the four to 11 range, is that correct?
Ages four to 11 and then the, the 12 to 18 in the next slide.
Can you tell us what, what percentage of our total student cases in October, November, December, January and now February? What percentage of those student cases have been in the four to 11 range?
Of the total number of?
Yes, I mean, for example, in the month of January, we had 781 faculty, staff and student cases. So how many of those were students? And of those students, how many of those were in the four to 11 range?
Yeah, I, I would have to get that breakout. I, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
I'd have to get with our data analyst to pull that.
Do you know off the top of your head whether the percentages are lower, the younger our students are?
In terms, from the total number of cases, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. I hate to put you on the spot and I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to get to that ahead of time. I just wanted to see if you happen to know that answer and so I appreciate that.
No, that's a great question and, and I'm certainly happy to, to pull that.
Uh, Steve, we have another question. Uh, Mr. Howell?
Have you seen any cases of the new strain of the virus in Gaston County?
We, we have not seen or identified a variant case. Um, however, that's also not to say that it's not here. Um, kind of like, you know, some of the positive COVID cases, we believe probably were around prior to, uh, the first case being identified. Um, but we work with our state partners from a surveillance perspective and currently we have not seen a, a variant strain, uh, to this point. Uh, although I believe Mecklenburg has seen, uh, has seen at least one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I, I have one more question?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Uh, uh, board member, uh, Davis mentioned a decline in the numbers. Wouldn't you think that that decline, uh, is reflective of the current practices that are in place right now?
So I think it, I think you're, you're correct. I think it's the, the, the downward trend that we're seeing is what we pretty much predicted from the beginning, which was we knew coming out of the holidays from Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, that that was, and we were already surging at that point. But then when you had the, the groups gathering, uh, the indoor gathering and then the holidays, it was, it was, um, we knew that there was going to be a surge. Uh, so coming off of that, um, coming off of those holidays, we saw the decline. But to your point, I think that as, coming off of that combined with folks practicing the, the, the measures that we know work, the washing your hands, socially distancing, et cetera, that has also led to the decline.
Thank you.
And if we can get to warmer months, uh, we'll probably continue to see a decline. Uh, so we're, we're heading in the right direction.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Guthrie. And before I close, on behalf of this school board, we want to thank you, Mr. Eaton, for working with Dr. Booker and his staff this past year. It's been very valuable for us to have this partnership with the health department.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what I tell my health director, uh, friends, there, that the relationship that we have with the school system, with the school leadership, with the teachers, um, you all can be assured, you have the finest. Um, it is, it is a pleasure working with, with, with everyone within the school system and from our nurses and everybody who has contact, uh, with, with the staff, people, you know, I just hear rave reviews and, and I, I can tell you, it's, um, it's a great partnership to, to your point. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Booker.
So as most of you are aware, Governor Cooper held a press conference last week to stress the importance of school different districts offering in-person learning in some form as an option for students and families. He cited that there were still 25 districts in the state that weren't doing some form, while many districts are operating under Plan B, which is a blend of in-person instruction and remote learning. There are still districts that are operating in C, which is all remote learning for students. And some districts have adopted Plan A for elementary schools, which allows for in-person learning up to five days a week without having to follow the requirement of six feet social distancing. At the same time that that press conference was going on, there was a bill introduced in the North Carolina Senate that if it becomes law, would require school districts to offer some version of in-person learning for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year and provide in-person instruction for students with individualized learning plans. Before I begin discussing Plan A specifically, I think you need to remember that you are a district that has been in Plan B since August. Your teaching faculty came to work in August. Not many districts can say that. We have offered in addition to that, a hybrid format with two days a week for in-person and the remote three days. At the same time, we offered a Plan C, which was full remote learning, so that our community had a true choice. Today, when we take a look at Plan A, we need to remember that the only thing the governor said last week was that he encouraged you to do what he had authorized in October. He did not change anything for grade six through 12. That still requires six feet distancing and all of the associated things that go with that. So when you think about where we have been, we all are familiar with the strong schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit. And you can see in the fine print of this slide, it was first introduced in the June of last year. And it has been updated ongoing and in fact, Tuesday, they provided another update to it. This is the model that we published and have been following since, where our students go two days, we have a remote learning day, which allows for staff professional development or professional learning communities, as well as the deep cleaning of our buildings. And then group B comes on Thursday and Friday. And remote learning goes on as far as the virtual school, all five days. We had a response that over 73% of our students are coming to the hybrid, they're in our buildings. At the same time, we had just short of 27% of our students who are 100% virtual. Through all this, we have had these protocols that we continue to operate with today. That is daily temperature checks, health questionnaire, mask for everyone, social distancing and classrooming on buses, the deep cleaning practices, PPNA. We have, as many people have struggled to, to get some of the ancillary things, but the main items, we have thousands in stock to try and answer that. And through it all, we've all tried to raise awareness about COVID-19 and try to react as things have changed. So when we talk about the Public Health Toolkit, most commonly referred to as strong schools, last week they published, and I know it's small print here, but that chart on the right, and if you could look at, it says all checks with one X. And so we highlighted this to amplify what it looks like. And you see that they're saying the six feet protocol does not apply if you go to Plan A for grades K through five. So how does this impact the daily operations of schools? First, let's look at transportation. Last August, we showed you a layout where it was allowed for one child per seat. Now, and in doing that, our buses are disinfected after each load, drivers have time to provide that, and we have tried to make sure that we have a clean and active environment for that. If you were to look at Plan A, it allows for two students per seat. It will even allow for two or three students per seat because it eliminates the social distancing. You as a district or one of the few, if not only, district that has bus monitors on all of your buses to support this. So it would increase the potential workload related to that. So that would be things. But we would still do our disinfecting a- as we have done, but you would have this and what, and that print there just shows what is written about for K through fifth grade, you may operate differently, but they encourage you where you can to maintain the spacing. When we talk about school nutrition, we all know the logistics that have gone on related to school nutrition. You know, we have been fortunate that our school nutrition staff has, since the pandemic, has served over 3 million meals. And when we went to in-person instruction, they adapted and we have, majority of our classrooms are being served in class. We have some schools where they go get the meal and bring it back to class, all to ensure social distancing. So as we move forward, the prepackaged and distribution of that would cause a change in how we're doing it and taking, needing more labor to support that. But we, we would continue when we think about cleanliness and doing, these same procedures have been in place and our maintenance crew has done some adaptation of facilities to support this. All that would still be in place and we would still do the cleaning. And that's why you hear us talking about how important the Wednesday day would remain. There is signage throughout our buildings and one of the things that the God stresses and that we would stress is, you will have spaces in Plan A that you cannot maintain six feet, but where you can maintain six feet, you should. And we would maintain all of the signage, encouraging and supporting that for where it could be. This diagram is one that we used last August to show you about a typical classroom. And you see those five desks there and when you multiply the five pods out, that's 25. And the lower left-hand corner is for small group breakout by a teacher, teacher assistant or curriculum assistant. So that would be what a room would look pre-COVID. And you see how the six feet space is all intertwined. This showed you what a room respective of the six feet would look like with a, a lot of spacing. And you see it drops to 12 students. This next one was just a representative to show you, it's 19 and you tried to maintain six. And we pointed out at that time how the outer ring was very difficult to see how it could be utilized, but that would do. And then this one was trying to get to 22. This again was to show with six feet spacing. We showed you some pictures from Tryon, where these were from back last August where they're setting the schools up to show the spacing. And this next picture is one that was taken this weekend where they've started looking at a kindergarten room, if you were to bring in the tables and what it would take to seat 21 students. This next slide show you an actual case in WA Best. If you had 19 seats in a classroom, they would be three feet apart. If you needed 32 seats, two feet apart, because I will remind you that the North Carolina has class size standards, K3, but for four and five, there are no limits on that. And you have some classes in Gaston County that have 29, 30, 31 students. And depending on those that have been in Plan A or Hybrid A and Hybrid B, when you combine those, you could have numbers. So this is giving you representatives so that you can see it. This building consideration slide is that we recognize the plan that we have now is functioning, but if you just, common sense says if we had X cars on A and X cars on B, they'll be combined. How that would work, that would be an adjustment and it would take time for working through that. So it would possibly double the cars that are there. And the other operational things that have been adapted, where we have students going directly to their classroom, being dismissed from the classroom, and all the movement that goes on would be adjusted to reflect what could happen with both cohorts there. But through it all, safety protocols would remain. The biggest change would be that third bullet, which would say minimal social distancing in classroom and on buses, and it may occur in other spots, but that's where we know that it would be effective. Some other things that we would stress, our facilities would continue to be closed to the public, not introducing, you know, uh, homeroom moms and things that come in and the great PTO support that we have enjoyed in this community for so long. We would also continue no community use because of the cleanliness and trying to keep that. We believe the Wednesday is critical to any way we operate our schools going forward at this time. Also, we're not talking about any changes to the Gaston Virtual. At the semester change, those students were given the opportunity, if they wanted to go back to the brick and mortar, they could. We did have a number of students to do that. And so that is set. And for those of you who have worked in our schools and know about setting rosters and changing, it would be just a very difficult, and it's not, it would be hard to do, we're talking about difficult, a lot of this talk about Plan A is because of social emotional. Think about changing a kid's teacher this far into the school year. None of us would think that is, is what we want to do. So as we look at this, I would just stress to you, some form of social distancing in our elementary schools is important. And if you, to consider Plan A, you could consider having a minimal distancing that you adopt. So you don't have six feet, you could say, we want a minimum of no more than, than X. We also believe again that the four-day schedule is important. This would align so that the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with the remote learning day aligns with what the middle and high schools are doing. This supports our families and what is going on in the community at this time, but it still provides for the ability to do the deep cleaning and keeping our, our schools as safe as possible. If you were to consider- If you were to consider Plan A to go into effect, we believe it would benefit giving our elementary schools ample time of at least two weeks to prepare for the transition. This transition allows the community and partner agencies to revise the way they've been supporting our operations. They have adjusted to meet the requirements of helping our parents for the three days they're out. They deserve an opportunity for that, in addition to some of these new procedures that would be in place, working through those. But I would like to say that if we do this, it's still, I know that we've had communication, you have people calling in the office going, "When will my high school be able to go five days a week?" That's not allowed, so there's no need to discuss that. Our facilities are not large enough to maintain six feet and keep our students there from a capacity standpoint at any of the schools. So, middle and high, at this point, have not been given that clearance by the governor. So, this is a discussion about pre-K through grade 5. Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. I know we probably have some questions and comments out there.
I have one.
Yeah, Mr. Deven.
Sorry. Dr. Booker, through contract, contact trace tracing for community spread, which one do we feel like is occurring in our schools?
I'm sorry, sir.
Between the tracing, the contact tracing?
Yes, sir.
Do we, have we found that to be more community spread or school spread?
We spend a lot of energy working with the Health Department. They have a team of folks. We have, primarily, our principals have taken a lot of this work upon them of tracing. And sir, part of the challenge always is, our protocols in the school are shown to be safe. We, most of the time, the contract tracing will show that it has come into our schools. As you know, we've had three classified clusters by the state of North Carolina, and that would be what they would clearly say was where we were a contributor to the spread. But for the majority of them, we have been just a part of what's going on in our community, and it comes into our schools. But our schools have operated in such a way as that we have not been contributing to the spread.
Well, I know that our teachers are real concerned about that. And the reason I ask that question is, you know, if it's more of a school spread, you know, then I would be more concerned also. But if it's a more community spread, I think it should relieve some of the pressure on our teachers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deven. Ms. Cherry?
Did I understand you correctly that you said that, that we could make this, and please correct me if I misunderstood you, about the distancing, that that's something that we could have latitude with?
Well, what they have said for K5, pre-K5, is that you no longer have to abide by the six and that you use the best practices that you can. Minimal distancing is allowed.
Okay.
I'm just offering to you that you could say X feet if you wanted to. I will just say to you, as those pictures showed, you saw two-feet spacing in our higher grades because we have a number of students in those classrooms. And that's, as you all know, that's generated by the way the funding works for those classrooms.
Well, I understand that, but let's say that we went to the extreme, back to the five or six feet. How would we be able to accommodate?
You would not.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clarified.
Our schools have worked very diligently, and I applaud the work of our teachers. You all haven't gotten to be, I get to the pleasure of going in the classrooms and seeing, you know, some have taped off the six-foot area for their students. Some have established a side area and just done great things to help the kids understand their boundaries and work with them.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Booker, this board has been inundated with emails from teachers and parents, and the social distancing is one of the key things we hear repeatedly. Do you think we could say three feet? Could you, do you think staff could make that work in a classroom if this board was to adopt a three-foot?
I do not. Our principals have been working hard, the plans they devised early on. It is very difficult in some of our classes to maintain two-feet separation. So, across the board, it would be hard to do three feet.
And I understand that some schools, this is not a problem, but we have a lot of other schools that these are obstacles that would be difficult to overcome. How about our virtual students? Are we going to require them to stay in virtual, or are we going to allow them to come back?
Back in the summer, when we had the onslaught of virtual and it grew to the numbers that it did, there's over 7,500, I'm doing that from memory, but roughly, I know for sure over 7,000 students still in virtual. They made a commitment to stay for the first semester. At the semester break, they were allowed the opportunity to return, and the majority stayed. You know, some schools, some of our high schools had as many as 80, 90 kids return. But, so they made a commitment, and so, we would say that that commitment still exists for the remainder of the year.
And I just wanted to clear that up. And, and then the vice versa works too. Those who committed to in-person, we're going to require them to come. If we choose a version of Plan A, we're going to require them to come even if they all of a sudden feel hesitant to come into more crowded classrooms.
That would be the way we would need to operate at this time, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for right now, Mr. Ramsey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Uh, Ms. Cherry?
I have a question.
Okay. Hold on, Ms. Guthrie. Let's go with Ms. Lovelace first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank you first, Dr. Booker, and your administrative team for compiling all of the presented information and the facts. I also appreciate all the conversations that we have had with parents and teachers pertaining to the reopening of schools. As a retired teacher, I am thankful for the opportunity of having substituted from September to December 4th, 2020. I felt safe with the protocols in place, which included cleaning all desks and all touched surfaces many times throughout the school day. I commend all educators and support personnel for going the extra mile to keep everyone in our school safe. Being proactive has been successful for Gaston County schools. However, I would not feel safe in any grade level with capacity at 100% for several reasons. It is physically impossible due to square footage in our classrooms to social distance, even though it is no longer required for K through 5. And I do question if this is best practice, because these students and teachers will be together in the classrooms for more than six hours a day. The age of some of our schools will also dictate whether or not ventilation and air filtration will help or hinder COVID protocol. Per code, the amount of air exchange per hour is calculated based on the occupancy and square footage for each classroom. And also, will students continue to eat lunch in their classrooms where social distancing cannot be achieved and masks are obviously off? On the flip side, I know the quality of education has declined during this pandemic due to the absence of in-person education. Nothing can replace in-person instruction. I do, however, applaud our teachers for what they have been able to deliver during Plan B. We know that students are resilient, and Gaston County schools will offer many opportunities for remediation once schools are reopened. We also know that teachers are working harder and longer hours per day and are looking forward to some form of educational normalcy when it is safe to do so. It has been almost 11 months since Governor Cooper closed North Carolina schools, and finally, COVID vaccinations are within our reach. So far, Gaston County schools have been proactive, and I hope there will not be a time when we must be reactive as a result of additional contamination. We must also consider the new variants of COVID. They, we have been told that they are more infectious. It is my opinion for Gaston County schools to remain in Plan B until our educators and all support personnel have the opportunity to receive their vaccines. This will not only protect our teachers and support personnel, but also our students. This would interrupt transmission from adults to students. And I would also think that parents would have a peace of mind knowing that the adults who are working with their children on a day-to-day basis have already been vaccinated. In addition, I hope that Gaston County schools will address air filtration and ventilation in each classroom by upgrading air filtration systems where necessary. I do know and understand that this is an infrastructure issue that may need to be addressed as we move forward. My opinion is based on the fact that this is a public safety issue, not a political one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. Uh, Mr. Howell?
Dr. Booker, I understand, did you not have a survey done with the 30 schools and what was the results of that? Their thoughts, teachers and principals?
Well, we didn't do any formal surveying of any faculty at all. What we have done is, since the governor's meeting, we've said, you know, all of our schools knew from back in the summer, we could be doing A, B, or C. So, we asked them to evaluate what they had in B. Meet Dr. Jackson, who leads our elementary schools, met with groups of them to discuss, and so, we could identify things, part of what we talked about here are the summation of the discussions that our leadership team had to represent what we think it would take to move at this time. But our schools, I, you know, schools are available and willing to do the direction assigned, but it's our role to tell you what we believe it takes to get it done.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Howell. Uh, Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to begin with, as you can see, I am home. I am not in person with my colleagues, but this does not mean that I am less concerned about the items on this evening's agenda. This does not mean that I do not want to be in person with my board colleagues. This does not mean that I am not aware of what's happening in our schools. However, it means that I am more comfortable right now here at home. I personally believe that students, teachers, and staff should remain in Plan B. I strongly believe because of the following. As Dr. Booker was giving his report, I was using my reference source, and I looked at a original COVID plan for schools. And I did see that if the social distancing was changed, then there would need to be someone there to monitor at all times. Can we afford to do that? No. I believe that it is essential and strongly believe that every child has a right to learn, just as every teacher loves to nurture children, get them excited about the lessons that are in the classroom. However, as chairperson of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, I have seen Dr. Bultnay and her directors, I have seen them diligently look for additional ways in addition to the learning platforms that we have access to. They are looking for additional ways to make sure that wraparound services are in place. Dr. Booker mentioned lunches, and I, I don't like the idea of just removing the mask even for lunch, because 15 minutes, I mean, without the mask, I mean, you could become positive. And what happens if that happens? Are we going to let a whole classroom go away for 10 or 15 days? We have so much to think about, and we want to make certain that we have the ventilation, and Ms. Lovelace has already talked about that. And when teachers spend, and you probably saw this, and I know this for a fact, we spend more than seven hours in a classroom with students, and if we have poor ventilation there, that's a concern. Do we have enough health workers, our nurses, to accommodate our schools if we were to return right now? We've already talked about the concerns that many families have, but when we know that those things exist, we have jumped to the district office and we have reported those concerns, and I can tell you from experience that they, they have been and are still being addressed. It isn't an easy task when we say we do not want to interrupt a child's learning. If we return to A in some form, we are going to interrupt that child's learning environment. Little Johnny may have already mastered a skill because of the routine that has already been established. We, as a board, believe that all children should succeed. We are going to interrupt that belief. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Any other comments or questions? I was going to, uh, Mr. Davis?
Dr. Booker, I understand that Lincoln County and Union County have been in some form of Plan A for several months. Have you had an opportunity to speak with those folks, and can you share with us how that's gone for them?
I have been in, throughout the past several months, meetings where we discuss, we have a regional association, and we'll talk about that. One of the districts has closed schools nine different times related to this. They all express that the need to close classrooms when you have this, and that's what goes on. But you are correct that since the announcement by the governor in October, they have been in some form as early as the end of October, providing that. One of the districts, I know, still does the four days with one day for remote learning. So, that is out there, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
What, what are we going to do? What are, I don't, we need to, we need to, we need to be vocal about this. We need to speak about, what are, what?
Well, that's.
How are we feeling?
Yeah, we're, we're asking those questions as we speak. Mr. Deven has a question.
Dr. Booker, are our elementary principals, and I knew, I know you say they've been working at this, do they feel comfortable that they can pull this off?
Not to be a smart aleck, but pulling it off is not, what we want to do is, we're prepared to carry out the wishes of the board. They have worked diligently to do that. So, I've tried to stress some of the themes that we talk about, and if you go back to the plans that they did months ago, it was based on some criteria. I, I've just got to be honest, it is a struggle that for six months, we have stressed six feet, and that would now become zero feet. That, that's a hard thing for anybody to deal with. And so, they are trying as hard as they can to set up. That's why I was able to share these pictures. You know, after the governor's announcement, one of our elementary principals called me and said, "I am starting to set a wing up right now because I want to see it." And that's where you've seen some of these other pictures, some of those I got this weekend where folks were working on it. So, we are a can-do organization, but we also want to make sure we do it well.
Can do safely.
Hold on, Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Deven, you've been in a school. You, you should know how important this is.
I think, I think safety is a number one concern, but also, you were saying a minute ago that, that children are in such a routine. I think children, most of our children are in a bad routine. I think that our socially depriving them of going to school I think that our socially depriving them of going to school is really a serious, serious problem for our kids.
We are not thriving students, Mr. Dedman. We are teaching and they are learning.
Well, that's not everything that I hear.
Mr. Collier?
Well, I'll just say, Ms. Guthrie, no offense, I'm hearing from too many parents that their children are getting left behind in remote learning. And, and then the system that we're having, there's too much anxiety, too much mental anguish, too much pressure, just too much on the children. I understand that the teachers who are incredible in this county. I think we've got the best teaching staff anywhere around. But we, it's, this is taking a toll on the children, on a lot of children, not all children. Because there are children that thrive, there are children that are going to succeed. But I'm hearing that too many children are falling far behind. And I'm concerned about the futures for those children that are falling behind. I feel like education. Ms. Guthrie, please, can someone else speak? And I, I just feel like, you know, it is our job as educators from anywhere we sit in this county to make sure that we keep everybody caught up and, and, and don't let them fall any further behind. We're going to have a lottery mediation. Our, our teachers, when we ever get back to some sense of normalcy, are going to really have a lot of work cut out for them because of the number of children that are falling behind. And I, I, and I think it's critical, and I've said it many, many times, that we need to get in-person instruction. And I think any educator will agree with me that in-person instruction is the best instruction we can give our children. I want to make sure that we can do that. But I will also keep in mind that we need to try to do it and keep it safe. And I'm hearing a lot of the same stuff we had as we've talked about trying to move from C to B. And we had this immeasurable obstacles and things to overcome. And our staff and our teachers were able to do it. And, and I was very proud and successful to point to Gaston County Schools to see what our teachers and staff were able to do. I mean, I, I just can't tell you how proud I am. And here we are again, I think, in the best of education of all children, especially young K-5 students. I'd like to see all children go back to school, let me just say that. But we can only talk about K-5 right now. So with that, you know, I, I really think that we need to get them in front of a teacher as much as we can. But also have our staff do what we can, everything possible to keep our teachers safe and our children safe. And so I, I'm completely open listening to this going back to school because I'm in favor of it and I think that we need our children for the reasons Mr. Dedman mentioned and the reasons the governor mentioned and the state superintendent mentioned and all the reasons that they've mentioned that we need our children back in school.
Dr. Booker, can you kind of let us know what some plans are as the counties moving forward? I know Cleveland County is moving forward, but I wasn't sure of the ones you spoke to.
Some of our peer groups, Cleveland County is, they are meeting tonight, but they had adopted back in December that they would return K-5 over a staggered two-week period. And they have delayed that twice. But it's planned for, I believe, February twenty-second for the first piece and then the second piece coming March first, if I remember correctly. One of the other districts that butts up to us on I-40 met and they went K-5 returning, but they maintained the hybrid like we have where they left the Wednesday done. And I'm not sure what Rutherford is doing. And CMS has not announced any clarifying plans about what they are doing. Cabarrus County is starting February twenty-second with the younger children and then graduating to it into March for K-5. But they are maintaining their, they currently operate in a hybrid with Friday off and they are maintaining that day. So it's, the other similar-sized district, our peer groups, are now looking at it somewhere at the end of February into March.
May I speak now?
Hold on, Mr. Davis had his hand raised and then I'll go to you, Ms. Guthrie. Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, folks, as we've gone through this, we sat here last March and we closed schools and went to a virtual remote learning model where none of our kids were in schools. Our seniors weren't able to finish their senior year and able to have the kind of graduation that they wanted. And the reason why that occurred was because what we were dealing with was the unknown. COVID-19 was the unknown and we didn't know. And so the guidance that we got from our health professionals was that we needed to play it safe until we figured out what was going on and what our risks were. And as time went on and as the spring went on and different countries and different regions and different places dealt with this, we learned more and we learned more and we learned more. And as the summer went on, we learned more. And when it came down to July, from what we had learned and what those in power over our heads had decided was that we had the option to either go with a virtual model in Plan C or a hybrid model in Plan B. And we, as a board, looked at the guidance that was presented to us. And we looked at what the folks in power above us said we could do and what we couldn't do. And we looked at what they said could be done safely. And we made the bold decision that other districts did not make to go with Plan B. And we did it looking at what we were told could be done safely. And we've been doing that. And we've done it well and we've succeeded. And we had a lot of people in July tell us we shouldn't do that. And they told us that because they were afraid of the unknown. But what we were told was that we could do it safely and so we did. Now we sit here today and we have been told that you can operate K-5 safely without having six-foot social distancing. That is what the powers that be and the scientists and the folks that have done studies and looked at data from all over the world have now told us. And we know, we know we have had learning loss. We know that virtual remote learning is, has not been as effective as being in front of a teacher and in a classroom. Because our teachers do a doggone good job of teaching our students when they're in front of them. And our students learn when they are. And that's exactly the way schools should be taught. And so we know learning loss has been significant. We know there have been emotional issues with children not in school. And we have heard from countless numbers of parents that please get our kids back in school when you can, when you've been told you can and when you've been told it is safe to do so. We've learned through this COVID pandemic that the risks to our smallest children and the risks in those environments where our smallest children are are not what we originally feared they might be. We know that that's not the case. And so here we sit with an opportunity to make a decision about stopping some of that learning loss and starting to get these kids back on the track that they need to be on. I wish we could have all our kids in school five days a week. But we're not here to talk about all our kids tonight because we can't. But we can talk about K-5. And I wish we could have them in there five days a week. But what we're hearing here tonight is that if we're going to do a Plan A, we need that Wednesday.
We do.
In order to help to make this change and facilitate moving our kids back into school on more days than just two. And so I think we should do something here tonight in order to do that. I think it's important that we do. I have listened to everything everybody has said here tonight. I've listened to Dr. Booker, I've listened to Mr. Eaton, I've listened to my fellow board members. And I think when you listen to what has been said here tonight and when you listen to what the folks in Raleigh told us last week on Tuesday, they've told us that what we ought to do is put our kids back in school in K-5 on some form of a Plan A. And Dr. Booker has told us we can do that and his team can move forward and we can succeed.
Okay, Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I do want to say that I was the person that objected in August that we couldn't do it. And of course, with our wonderful superintendent, staff, teachers, families, and students, we were able to do it. Now they are on a routine and we're going to interrupt that routine. That's one of the things that I wanted to say. And secondly, I know how important it is to have in-person learning. I've been in the classroom, I was in the classroom for thirty-eight years. And I understand the importance of standing before students and helping them to figure out those problems or issues that they have presented to them. I understand every bit of that. It's not that I am disagreeing that our children shouldn't be in school. However, if we are going to have our children return to the classroom, there are so many variables that we need to consider. As well as, I hear, I think I hear the superintendent in his presentation speak of the importance of having our schools clean properly. And if we are going to do that, I would strongly suggest having the four days.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes.
All right, but before I make the motion, I, I came in here, I want to say, like Mr. Davis, I wanted to see our children go back to school five days a week. After hearing the discussion and even Ms. Guthrie's comments and Mr. Booker's presentation, I'm going to scale back what I was going to make a motion for. So I'm going to make a motion that we go into Plan A, four days a week, Wednesdays off for K-5. And I'd also make that effective March first is my motion. But I'm open for discussion about changing start date.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Davis, second. That said, was any more discussions? Okay, Mr. Dedman?
I'd like to discuss with Mr. Collier. I, I, I think that two weeks would probably be sufficient. I think if we wait three, and Mr. Booker, Dr. Booker, he said that, you know, we're ready to do this. The logistics part of it, our transportation, our food, I think two weeks will be sufficient. Dr. Booker, could we do it in two? And I know you're going to say yes. But I mean, you know, do you think it's beneficial to go three? I'm just saying if we continue to go out and out and out, I'd rather see two.
As we have worked with leadership, we need a minimum of two weeks. Because again, I'm as concerned about the partners who have, our parents have relationships for how they're working through things. They have commitments and giving notices to daycare or whatever they're doing. It will take time for that part.
Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, if I could just get consensus from the board, if they want to change that to two weeks, I'll amend my motion.
I'm, I'm definitely in favor of two weeks.
Mr. Chair, if I have permission to speak, I would like to ask a question.
Yes, let's, Mr., okay, Ms. Guthrie?
I see the disadvantages of being at home, but I'm going to remain home until I feel safe.
That's fine.
Dr. Booker, how long do you think it would take to analyze the current situation? What you need as far as your nutrition staff, the health workers and the drivers, the buses, and the other important people that you need to put in place as far as getting the schools back for four days?
Ms. Guthrie, our, our folks have had the plan and reviewed what they need. As, as they said, as they've designed this, it would take them that, the two weeks would allow for that. Now, as far as necessary additional folks, we have the folks that will just be, they'll, they'll have their full load of students now at one time instead of spread between two days.
Would the parents that are listening tonight, if they have the opportunity and want to bring their children back? I understand the promise that was made earlier about keeping their children in virtual school. If they insist, how would you handle that?
At this time, it would be a significant disruption and that's as all of our plans have been. It's based on the students that we have now and the commitment. Think about all the schedules that have been done with the specials that go on in elementary school and the coordination that allows for the teachers to have their planning time on the, the days in school. So that, all that would have to be reworked. In addition to, in creating the virtual school, we have teachers that are in the virtual school that are not part of the brick and mortar school as far as student assignment is concerned. They're still part of that teaching faculty, but they're not there to spread out that load. So that would be other difficulties.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dedman? Okay, there's an amendment on the floor and Mr. Dedman's moving the date from March the first to February twenty-second. Y'all want to discuss it first or Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll second Mr. Dedman's amendment to my motion for discussion if nothing else.
Okay, all right. Any more discuss?
I think two weeks that Dr. Booker has backed that up and that we're ready to go. And two weeks is going to give the parents an opportunity to make any other arrangements for those two days they need to make or the other day. And I think if we just continue to put it off, we're wasting another week of our children's education in the school system.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Howell?
Could we get an update in a week to see if things are going smoothly and revise it?
Absolutely. We're scheduled for next Monday on the fifteenth and we give, I know that Mr. Booker and his staff can give us a pretty good update. And if anything, we run into roadblocks, he'll let us know.
Give them more time? If we vote A to give them more time, see what, you know, you, three, two? So I'd have to make an amendment. I would have to make an amendment?
No, this time you're asking.
Revisit it in a week if need be. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have a regular meeting next Monday. We'll get a, a good update from Mr. Dr. Booker and his staff. If he has any comments or concerns that we can't make the twenty-second date, he'll share that with us at that time. Okay, any more comments, questions, discussion before we go to a vote? Mr. Moore?
I think whatever we do, we need, we need a concrete date on when, what we're going to do. I, I'm, I'm more comfortable with the three weeks. I feel like that, I feel like that's what staff needs. But I think whatever we do tonight, we need, we need a concrete date, you know, in place so these parents can have time to, to make adjustments and, and the staff, teachers as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. I probably would turn to Dr. Booker and ask him if he prefers two or three weeks where, because I think we've got a split on this and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but also I want you to be prepared. And if you think you need February twenty-second or March first, I think they'll listen to what you have to say.
I believe what Mr. Moore just said is my response in that we need a date that we will drive to meet and we will meet that date. And our community needs that because I, as a parent, need to know. And if you tell me the twenty-second and then you move it to the first, if you, the first and come back, it needs. And so to me, that's the smartest thing is a date and we will work towards it.
So are you three, two weeks or three weeks?
You took the question out of my mouth.
Obviously, three weeks gives you another week of prep time and another week of trying to iron out any of the things. But I will tell you that at three weeks, we are still going to have, it will be the first week of school again. And, and we will have the bumps and bruises that come with the first week of schools because.
That's why I'm hoping we'll just do two weeks because we're going to be another week behind if we keep doing that. But I, but I'll go. But, but I'll go along with the pledge of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to comment. I, 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 I see Mr. Dedman's point and what Mr. Hall is getting to. So, uh, I'm good with two weeks, but we do need to know next week if we're in a position that we have to push that date back. I think, uh, we, we'd like to be able to have as much notice as we can. So that was my thinking of the three weeks. But in two weeks with the caveat, if we have to push, we can and, uh, to, to Mr. Hall's point.
I would say if, without doing mixed messages here, that the three weeks would probably be better in the long run. I agree with Dedman and Kevin on what they're saying, two weeks. But, you know, when he started implementing this, he might need the three weeks. And I hate to come back and extend another week. That's where I'm at on that. So I, I'm open to two or three weeks. That's why I turned to Dr. Booker and if he thinks he needs those three weeks, we'll give it to him.
I think, first of all, today telling them tomorrow is not two weeks. If you get technical, if you're being a literal person. But it will be a better implementation on March 1st than it will be on February 22nd. That's just the nature of time and implementing.
Yes, that does make two. So, uh, Mr. Dedman?
You know, we continue to put this off and we're beating it up. You know, if we're going to do it, we need to do it in two weeks. Our school system can be ready to go in two weeks. That'll give our children another week in school. And if it's, you know, right now, if you go back to March 1st, what Dr. Booker's saying is we'll forget that whole week. So we're, we're, we're four weeks out. So common sense tells me that if we're going to do this and we are going to do this, we need to do it in two weeks. I mean, aren't people already, I mean, it's not, they've been working up to this, they've been planning for this. I mean, I spoke with our bus supervisor today. I mean, you know, all the things that we need are there. I just think we're prolonging it for, I don't know why. Our kids need to be in school and two weeks is ample amount of time for them to get there. Yeah, a call to question.
Okay, so the amendment's on the floor and I'll read that back to you. Is go to implement Plan A with four days, Wednesday off for cleaning virtual, K-5. An amendment is from, to February 22nd. I do have a motion and I have a second. Mr. Dedman, motion, second, Collier. Okay.
And just a point of order, we're voting only on the amendment at this time and then, uh-
Absolutely, because he-
Just the amendment, thank you.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Dedman, Mr. Davis and Mr. Collier and Doc hadn't raised his hand. Oppose? Yes, uh, Mr. Hall, Ms. Lovelace, Mr. Ramsey, Ms. Cherry and Doc Guthrie.
No, no, I'm sorry, you said oppose, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the two week, February 22nd, so-
We oppose that, I want to make sure of that.
Yeah, original motion's back on the floor. March 1st start date, thank you, Mr. Collier. So we do- I hope there's no more discussion on that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor for March 1st? Okay, thank you, Ms. McGraw. This is the implement Plan A, K-5 with four days, Wednesday for deep cleaning and virtual. Start date, March 1st. All in favor? Okay, uh, Mr. Dedman, yes. Mr. Davis, yes, Mr. Hall, yes, Mr. Ramsey, Ms. Cherry, Mr. Collier and Brent Moore. All opposed? Ms. Lovelace and Ms. Guthrie. It carries seven to two. Thank you. Well, yes. In closing, I would like to thank everyone for your comments. This is a very important matter that affects our entire community and our most valuable members are children of Gaston County. If we do our best and do what is best for the children, then we will have done our jobs here as a board. I would also like to thank on behalf of the full board, all of our teachers, staff, the citizens who continue to support and work Gaston County Schools. We have much to be proud of in what we're doing here. So I'll ask Mr. Dedman for adjournment. Thank you. Second, Ms. Cherry, all in favor? Thank you.